Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, March 12th, year 2018. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Madam Clerk, roll call of attendance.
Maldonado?
Present.
Franciski?
Present.
Walker?
Present.
Vasquez?
Present.
Garcia?
Present.
Orange?
Present.
Perez?
Present.
Monroe?
Present.
Medina?
Present.
First item on the agenda.
Minutes 226, 2018.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to approve the minutes for Monday, February 26th. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
There are no communications from the mayor.
I believe we have Mr. Allegretti in the audience. He wish to approach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. Joe Allegretti, Corporation Council. I'm here to talk about the ordinance that's on before the council for third reading. This morning, we had a very helpful and lengthy conference call participated in by Councilman Garcia, Council Attorney John Buscemi, Steve Dalton, and other, with the developers of the proposed so-called Carson Manor Senior Housing. As has been previously discussed, the $3.2 million of the appropriation under General Fund 101 for other services and charges is to represent the making available money to be used as a grant to the East Chicago Housing Authority to build 206 units to replace the aging and tired Nicosia seniors center. The administration welcomes the oversight and the vetting by the council and your professional representatives. We had a real good meeting. A lot of questions were asked and answered. It was, I think, in, which maybe wasn't discussed during the last meeting, but this, by adopting this budget ordinance, does not mean that there's going to be a check written without further oversight and opportunity for further vetting by the council. It just means that the project, it sends a message that the project, the city is interested in the project and the project can go forward. I think the developers indicated that their time is sensitive and they would like to see some kind of a closing if all the planets align, perhaps in July. We're a long way from doing that. There are many moving parts and lots of participants and the money is coming from various sources, the total money of $39,000, of which the city's contribution is a relatively small amount. I just want to, I think there's some sentiment among certain members of the council. They'd like to slow the process down and even amend this ordinance by, and take out the $3.2 million. My message to you very briefly is that, yes, I think that sends a wrong message to the developer. I think all the participants and the people coming up with the money have expressed an interest and we want to keep the interest in the project moving forward. I want to assure you what you already know, and that is that the project cannot go forward without the council ultimately proving, approving a claim for $3.2 million, which has to be contained in your claim docket and approved as a warrant, as all other, as in the case of all other claims. Furthermore, the nature of this deal, as your professional representatives will tell you, are very conservative and if they, is even a slight a suggestion that the council or the majority of the council is not in favor of proceeding with the project, I assure you, this project will not go forward. The developers welcome the opportunity for a fact-finding session or a work-study session for the council committee or the council as a whole or whatever the council would decide. I just would request and suggest to you that the better cause of action is not to amend the ordinance, but rather to adopt it and then participate through your representatives or through the council as, in the negotiation of the final terms of the deal and to make sure that it's a, it's a, it's a good deal, it meets with approval, and it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Communications from department heads. Accounts payable warrant 022218CC. So move, Mr. President?
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Vasquez, properly second by Councilwoman Walker, to hear accounts payable warrant 022218CC. Questions on the motion? Roll call.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. That motion carries. Next item.
Accounts payable warrant 030618CC.
So move, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Franciski, properly second by Councilwoman Orange, to hear accounts payable warrant 030618CC. Questions on that motion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Accounts payable warrant 031218CC. So move, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Walker, properly second by Councilman Franciski, to hear accounts payable warrant 031218CC. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Accounts payable warrant 031218LA. So move, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Vasquez, properly second by Councilman Monroe, to hear accounts payable warrant 031218LA. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Payroll warrant monthly 030118.
So move, Mr. President? Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilman Monroe, to hear payroll warrant monthly 030118. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Councilwoman Orange?
Mr. President, you had charged myself and Councilman Monroe to come up with something that would, we could fill our board positions because they had carried over from last year. And so every council person did get a chance to vote. And as you know, Wayne Colley did decide that he was not going to run for that position. He is a Republican and we do need a Republican person to sit on the UEA board, has to be within the boundaries of the district and you could call the UEA for where the boundaries are because they are kind of scattered throughout the city. And we have asked the director to look back into that and see had, in the last 20 years, have they changed those boundaries? Because I think at the beginning of the boundaries, the intent was to have it where you would have some people that were, had a certain amount of income and some people that were low income and a mixture of the both, of both incomes. And I think since the way things have changed in East Chicago, they may need to look back at that in order for us to make sure that we're covering that spot. So it goes as follows. For the library board, it will be Diane Cologne. For the redevelopment board, it will be Loretta Mosley and Judy Nava. Their term expires 12/31/19. And those are the positions that we had for the board. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? I thank you for your hard work on that, Councilwoman. Could you please forward those results to the clerk?
You go, madam.
For the record.
And also that she would send them a letter.
Yes.
I think that the clerk's office has to swear them back in, the ones in their positions. So would you set up the time for them to be sworn in?
Madam Clerk, can we make sure that due process is taken care of? Thank you. Next item. No board reports. Move on to the next item.
I have an ordinance on second reading. Ordinance 180005, sponsor Councilman Richard Medina, ordinance for flood hazard areas for the city of East Chicago, Indiana.
Second. Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilman Franciski, to hear ordinance 18-0005 on second and final reading. Questions on that motion? Madam Clerk, roll call to adopt 18-0005.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. That motion carries. Next item.
Ordinance on third reading. Ordinance 180003, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, additional appropriation ordinance appropriating the general fund, local road and street, motor vehicle, highway, and parks and recreation for budget year 2018. So move on third reading.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilman Monroe, to hear on third reading, ordinance 18-0003. Questions on the motion? Councilman Garcia.
Yes. Just wanted to let everybody know, I was part of that conference call this morning and I learned new things at that conference call. And I think this is something, a lot of information that shouldn't have been provided to us before this process started. You know, they started this project in 2016. They could have started last year with the finance chair informing her, informing this council what was going on. And it's a lot of moving parts, like Attorney Allegretti says, there's a lot of internal things that's got to go on. But I think that the lack, that information that was provided to us to give $2.3 million just free like that without transparency, to me, is just not right. You know what? I, you know, we all need to get briefed on this project, especially the finances, a lot of complex issues in this. And I make this, Mr. President, a motion that we can bring it out of this and bring
Do we have any further questions? Councilwoman Orange?
Um, Ms. Colley and I guess her attorney is here. I would like to ask a couple of questions. Okay. How bad is the Nicosia building? Because I did take a tour through there and I noticed that it was raining in the windows and that the people had a lot of complaints whenever they see anybody that they figured in political office go through there. They were complaining about it and it is in bad shape.
The Nicosia building is extremely bad. If we are not able to start new construction at one point in time, the city was going to condemn the building. Because of what we've gone through with West Calumet, we, the city worked with the housing authority. We had a corrective action plan or temporary corrective action plan to help resolve some of the problems. What has happened is some of the residents have moved out of the units and we've moved, we've transferred the different residents over to other units to do a Band-Aid until we could get the residents out of there. If we do not come up with the new building, we will have to close that building down and we will have to move those residents out of the Nicosia building and that will be another 157 residents that will leave the city of East Chicago. Because those are one bedrooms and only one two-bedroom.
And my second question to you, I know that there were people that called me after they saw the council meeting on TV and asking not for that if this project goes through, for it not to be named Carson Manor. Have you ever given, have you given any other thought to that?
We can, we can do a vote on if that's the only thing that's holding us up. We can, I don't care what it's called. It's just the time of, the matter is we need to get the residents out of the Nicosia building. We have the rain issues, we have the column issues. HUD came down last year, they put the columns down, well, they made us put a fence around it temporarily just to help save and to make sure nothing fell off the residence, on the residents. The only alternative that we do have is if we end up closing the building down, we will give those residents vouchers. We'll use what's left to relocate them and let them have a relocation. I would have to see that how soon HUD would allow them to go ahead and leave the city of East Chicago because a housing authority just sat down with HUD, Hammond Housing, as well as the state where, because the city of East Chicago only has so many properties, so they decided to go ahead and grandfather other, housing authorities in other areas in where they don't have to just stay in the city of East Chicago. But I'd have to see if those residents are going to be able to go like the residents in West Calumet as far as to Vegas or Atlanta, wherever they choose to go, to any of the states that we have. But right now, they're able to go to Hammond and the state dire, Sherrville, Highland, wherever else a voucher is accepted. Because we're landlocked in the city of East Chicago, we only have so many properties. And as far as a one-bedroom and a senior property, you're really landlocked because some of those residents will need walkers, just like you mentioned about the elevators at the previous meeting. Some of those units will not have special elevators to be able to get those residents in and out. Right now, at the Hunter Building, we have about eight vacancies. Next week, we'll be down to three vacancies. We've asked the residents, we've had numerous public meetings, asking residents, are they interested in going into our building or being able to apply at other senior buildings and that we're more than welcome? To give them a letter to recommend them to go to another housing authority. Because we are getting the complaints over and over again about the problems at the
Councilman Garcia?
Yes, and I totally agree that it needs, Nicosia's in bad shape. But it's been the lack of maintenance the last, I don't know, 10 years maybe? And that's why it's in bad shape in the way it is today. You know, closing for this is not to July or maybe August. And my intention is not to try to stop the project, just to be accountable for this money. And that's a lot of money. And this is for a, for a profit company. This is not a nonprofit, it's for profit. All right? This is giving a private developer $3.2 million to do this project. And do we need it? Yes, we do. You know, closing is not to July or August. Another thing that I learned in this meeting was that they kept on calling it low-income housing. So you could put, you can put other lower, low-income people in this project.
There's a percentage. And it's a rad project.
So it's not going to be all senior in this housing, correct?
Yes, it will be.
All right. So there's going to be no low-income people in?
There will be low-income, but this is a senior project.
It'll be all seniors?
Yes. Except for the ones that are grandfathered in. That's the ones that are already at the Nicosia building. The agreement was for those that are already 50 and up, those will be grandfathered in. But as far as coming off the waiting list, there will be no one coming off the waiting list under the age of 62.
Now, it's talking about even younger than, younger than 50.
Well, at the Nicosia building or Hunter Building, we don't have anyone younger than that.
So it's going to be in writing that it's going to be a senior?
It's already in writing. And as far as the maintenance, from what, it's not lack of maintenance, what happened is it was a lack of the way it was constructed from the very beginning. Because the years that I've been there, we've done all the maintenance that was required. But the columns has nothing to do with maintenance. It would have to be all chipped off and re, put more concrete back on the walls, on the columns.
Well, for the meeting this morning, they considered low-income property. Is that right, Mr. Buscemi?
That was discussed at the meeting by the developer.
So, and that's my thing, it changing from now, if it changes five years from senior building to low-income?
Housing Authority has the first option to purchase the building. I may not be there at that time because that's 15 years down the line, but Housing Authority as well as the city will have the first options to purchase the building. That is what they've done in the past, just like they've done all the rest.
Yeah, I hope you are here 15 years, but.
I hope I'm somewhere, but.
Every time, we go every time. But I just hope after the day this passes that we have some accountability. I know they agreed to have a work session with this, with this council. I think we need to have some guarantees in this, in this because it's very.
Well, Councilman Garcia, I live in the city of East Chicago. I have over 30 years of experience with housing. I don't plan on going anywhere until my retirement date comes unless I would go to another agency. I can assure you, a lot of the residents see me in a grocery store. The residents had concerns about the relocation because some of the residents have been informed that we were just going to move them out and not give them anything. And that's nothing, that's nowhere near the truth, just like the residents in West Calumet. I did everything that I could for those residents and beyond the call of duty, even things that we didn't have to do as a housing authority. Nothing changes, especially with the seniors. I've always explained to them, I've worked with housing authorities since I was 19. I left for a couple of years and I came right back. I'll be 52, so as far as my word is my bond. And if I told the residents that I'm going to do certain things, just like if I had to put one of them out, I was going to do that as well. It's about the safety and accountability. And at this point, we've not taken care of our residents at the Nicosia building. There's certain things that we need to take care of and one of them is to get them out of that building.
I totally agree with you.
Any further questions? Councilman Monroe? So we're going to change the name?
Absolutely. If we get this $3.2 million, we can name it Mr. Monroe.
That sounds great. Do we have nine votes? Any further questions? Thank you, folks. Mr. Buscemi, could you approach the podium, please?
Mr. President, I received an email from yourself. You were pointing out some of the details that were missing or were lacking from the, from the agreement, from the contract. In your conversation this morning, did they agree to correct any of that language?
Councilman Garcia, Mr. Dalton, and I received some additional information during the conference call this morning with Mr. Burdick, the developer. But then during the course of that conference call, as oftentimes has, occurs, when you have a conference call and exchange information, many new questions arose. And Mr. Dalton and I, this afternoon, after the conference call, received this additional packet of information and documents that we just got this afternoon and that we have not had an opportunity to review or analyze on behalf of the council.
Okay, so the developers are providing the information you are requesting?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. And I, I am in favor of this project. I want to thank Councilman Garcia for the hard work he's been doing on trying to get some of these questions answered. I hate to see any of our residents leave town. But just the same, Mr. Allegretti brought up a good point. They don't make those corrections, we don't have to cut that check. But I would like to see the project move forward. I wish it would remain on the East Chicago side of town, but so be it. Councilwoman Orange?
Mr. President, you look, you are the councilman for the whole district. Don't be biased on that side of town.
We, well, we have, we have seniors.
I know what you mean.
Building.
Yeah, I thought.
And we are the great twin cities of the Midwest and that name we acquired some time ago because, in fact, we have two downtown areas, two McDonald's, one Burger King.
But, you know, I wanted to make a comment, Mr. President, if I could. It's not unprecedented, unprecedented of what we're doing right now. Because they did the same thing in the North Harbor. And just like Councilman Garcia, I asked a lot of questions. I wasn't in favor for the way they did things in the North Harbor. But we got a chance to come back and myself and Councilwoman Maldonado and Councilwoman Vasquez on some things when they tried to return to get some other things done. And I think that at this same situation, if they don't do what they're supposed to do in the first place when they come back, because they always return to the scene of the crime, I can tell you that. And if they come. And if they come back, then we know what we have to do. And we, we did the same thing with, uh, what was his name? I can't even call it. But, uh, he came back several times to get things done for North Harbor, and they, they had a sweetheart deal also. If, if you want to look at it that way, where they did a lot of stuff in the North Harbor they shouldn't have done. So, but I, I do have confidence, and, and at that time, it wasn't a fact of somebody having to move because the conditions were so bad. That, that's my only concern. And like I said, you know, if we, we're really thinking about the people, move on, but like, if it's not right, then, like you said, the check can be stopped. We, we, every two weeks, we do these same, um, warrants. And, uh, Councilman Garcia gonna say no on that one anyway, but he may have some other people joining him if it is not right.
I totally agree. Councilman Garcia?
Yeah, if you got a crystal ball to be borrowed, because you don't know what I'm gonna do.
No, but I'm saying, on that one, well, you'd have said, no, no, but I mean, you're right, I can't speak for you.
You can't speak for me.
No, I won't speak for you.
The thing is, is about accountability. You know, this project started in 2016. That was the plan to, to bring appropriation before this council, it could have started last year. All them questions could have been answered last year.
I think in 2016, they had the lead problem and a whole lot of other things. I think that, that wasn't a big thing.
This project started in 2016, the mayor wrote a, a letter to the developers saying that he was interested, and that process started last year, about 2016, excuse me, a year before last. So if, 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 if they had just made us a part of it, that's all they had to do. We wouldn't be here today. We would not be here today if they included us and it be some transparency in this process. And that's all we want, is some transparency. That's all we want.
Any further questions? Councilwoman Vasquez?
Oh, just a comment. Uh, for the record, that gentleman's name is Mr. Will Woodley. And at the time, that North Harbor project was brought to us, um, he was at every meeting, um, that he, that he needed to be at. But there's still complaints regarding that North Harbor project, and, um, I reached out to him and, um, do not get a returned phone call, so.
They don't need us anymore.
Sometimes it goes on and on. I just want to say that I think this situation is different. I think, um, our council attorney is getting a quick response to the questions that arose during the meeting this morning, so, um, I'm in favor of the project, and I do believe we need it. And I want to thank Ms. Colly and Housing for working so hard on the project.
Any further comments and/or questions? Madam Clerk, roll call to adopt ordinance number 18-0003.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yeah, yeah.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Point of order, folks.
I'm sorry.
Can we continue with roll call, please?
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item.
Resolutions. Resolution 18-0001, sponsor Councilman Rich Medina, resolution of the East Chicago Common Council in support of deferred action for childhood arrivals, DACA.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Maldonado. To hear resolution 18-0001. Madam Clerk, could you read that in its entirety, please?
Resolution of the East Chicago Common Council in support of deferred action for child arrivals, DACA. Resolution articulating the sense of the City of East Chicago Common Council urging the administration and Congress to protect DACA recipients and affirming support for all regardless of citizen status and immigration status. Whereas the program Deferred Action of Childhood Arrivals, known as DACA, was created through an executive action signed by President Barack Obama in June of 2012. And whereas DACA provides undocumented immigrants who were brought to the United States before 16 years of age, known as Dreamers, deferral of a removal action as an act of prosecutorial discretion provided they meet certain criteria such, such as being enrolled in high school or having a high school degree or a GED equivalent, and not having a serious criminal conviction. And whereas many immigrant parents bring their children to the United States to provide them with greater opportunities for access to the American dream. And whereas nearly 790,000 young DACA recipients have received work permits and removal relief through the DACA program, and who those benefits can be renewed. And whereas Indiana approximately 9,840 DACA recipients. And whereas immigrants have accounted for 27% of the Indiana's population growth between 2000 and 2015, according, according to a report by Emily Warnall, Assistant Professor with Ball State's University Indiana Community Institute. She found that 320,000 to 326,000 immigrants have come to our state over the 15-year period. And whereas the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy has reported that DACA-eligible immigrants in Indiana paid approximately $23,288,000 in state and local taxes in 2016. And whereas DACA is popular with the public and enjoys the support of employee, employers, educators, community leaders, and elected officials from both parties. According to a morning consult and political poll in April 2017, 78% of American support gives Dreamers legal permanent status. Now therefore, be it resolved by the East Chicago Common Council that it condemns President Donald Trump's recession of DACA, and be it further resolved that the East Chicago Common Council urges the President of the United States to stand by those brought as children to this country as the United States in the only country they know. And be it further resolved that the East Chicago Common Council supports a comprehensive and workable approach to resolve our nation's historically broken immigration system. And be it further resolved that the East Chicago Common Council calls upon the Congress of the United States to take affirmative steps to develop a bipartisan pathway to citizenship for Dreamers. And be it further resolved that the East Chicago Common Council directs the city clerk to transmit copies of this resolution to the President and Vice President of the United States, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, the Minority Leader of the House of Representatives, the Majority Leader of the United States Senate, the Minority Leader of the United States Senate, Congressman Peter Visklausky, Senator Joseph Donnelly, and Senator Todd Young, to encourage those persons to see that the, the objects and the purpose of this sense of the East Chicago Common Council are achieved.
Councilwoman Orange?
Uh, Council President, I'm, I'm glad that you did bring this forward. I mean, I think a lot of us have been on our mind, but nobody, the initiative to bring it forward, I, I appreciate that. I was just thinking, when we say to pledge allegiance, that we say liberty and justice for all, but we don't say unless you're an immigrant. And I think that, uh, and because I'm faced with that just about every day on our job, uh, through North Township, uh, of people coming in very scared, uh, not being able to get services because of that, but they, they have paid into the tax system, which is kind of strange. And they pay the taxes, but they have no, no benefits of being a citizen. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. And, uh, I, I think that the people of East Chicago, uh, will appreciate it too, and, glad that you did for the other cities that decided they wouldn't pass it, but I'm glad that you did.
Thank you, yes. I was contacted by, uh, several residents of our city who, uh, got word that the Lake County Council, in fact, passed, uh, resolutions similar to this, um, in late December. And they were wondering if and when we were going to. Um, and with, because of their request, I went ahead forward and, and, uh, contacted some people, and we put this together. Mr. Estrada, Attorney, works with Mr. Bushamie, helped me, uh, with the language here. Thank you very much. And, uh, I, I think it behooves us to do this, especially in our community that's, that's populated with a lot of undocumented, uh, residents. And it's unfortunate that their futures are in the air. Uh, let's hope that, uh, Congress, President, you know, give them something a little bit more concrete in the near future for which they could live on, so they could plan their futures. We, in fact, in '07, passed a resolution, um, in support of the Dream Act. And this is, uh, this was a spinoff from that. So it, it makes an impact when elected officials take these steps, and it's a request, it's a request. And, uh, I, I, I asked the clerk to leave the, the signature page so that we could all sign it, not just, uh, myself as a sponsor. I think that has more impact on our other colleagues, our other elected officials. Councilwoman Vasquez?
Yes, would it be possible to ask Attorney Estrada a question?
Sure. Mr. Estrada.
Can you tell me if, uh, um, if there's been an extension on the, uh?
On DACA? So as we know, President Trump via executive, uh, action back in September 2004, or 2017, withdrew or rescinded the DACA benefits instituted by the Obama administration. Quickly, um, it went into litigation, and there's been recent, um, a temporary injunction, uh, put in by Ninth Circuit District Court, temporarily enjoining the Trump administration's rescission of DACA. So currently, due to the court's action, DACA is as it was under the Obama administration, except for one extended benefit from, uh, applying for DACA. So right now, it's in limbo, and we don't know how long that is going to be, because it's on the court's docket. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals is going to hear the temporary injunction, not the case on its merit, just whether the injunction was proper. So, once we get a resolution to that, um, it could be any day now, um, then we'll see where DACA is going to be either extended throughout the merits of the, of the case or, um, taken away and, uh, as, of the court's decision. So, as of right now, what we're urging DACA recipients to do is to apply. Uh, even if they have a year and a half left, apply now, because it extends them six, seven months out than what they would have if, um, if they didn't apply. So, right now, it says as it was, except for advanced parole. Outside of that, it's, it's still viable, but any day it could change. Okay?
Thank you.
Any further questions? Madam Clerk, roll call to adopt resolution 18-0001.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, could you, um, pass that resolution around before we all leave for, for the end of the day? Thank you. Any further resolutions?
No.
We now move into old business? The floor is open to old business? Okay, let's move on to new business. Do we have any new business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vasquez?
Yes. Uh, Eli, the, our secretary, passed out a petition here, as that was signed by some of the residents on the 4,700 block of Ivy. So I just want to let my colleagues know that, um, I met with the person who initiated the petition, and I've already reached out to the department heads, and we'll be talking with them again, so just wanted to give you an update.
Great. Any further new business? I received a phone call from the, uh, Parks and Recreation by several of the employees there. Um, I don't know if you, you folks know that they have a questionnaire going around, um, in reference to our parks. They did mail me one, I have yet to, uh, open the envelope. However, they would like to, uh, get our input on some of the things that they have going on. I believe this is something that's going to probably take the whole year to, uh, to take, uh, different surveys of, but I would, I want to ask Councilwoman Maldonado if she would chair a Parks and Recreation Committee?
Yes.
Um, if you could ask a couple colleagues that are willing to work with you, and contact the, uh, Park Superintendent. She wants to, uh, get our input, and again, it's going to be ongoing, so I believe we need a standing committee for that.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further new business?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
With respect to the DACA resolution that the council did just pass, a point of clarification, it does call for the courts office, after it's signed, to transmit copies on behalf of the council to the various federal officials. So I trust that, um, the courts office will send, and actually move a copy to those officials on behalf of the council.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Let's move into public expression. I'd like to remind those speaking before us, please keep your comments to three minutes, and we'll start with Mr. Ford. Pastor Ford?
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've got an issue that I want to bring to you, it's counsel. Mr. Morse wrote, alluded to it last week, spoke about it, but then, uh, he dropped it. Has to do with basements flooding. And the problem is the way our building department approaches this, and I want to tell you why. Our church sits here close by, and it's about six feet from the neighbors. And the neighbors, for years, I've been there 30 years, we've never had a problem with water in the basement. Last year, we had water in the basement. The neighbor who bought it put gutters on and directed his gutters directly toward our church. There's only six feet there. It started to come in our building. Now, I looked around, and I want you to have this, uh, I want you to remember, it's a church, so those are all packed full of bullets. I looked around the country, what they're doing in other places, and I've given you some examples, there's websites there, New Orleans, Virginia, um, Chicago is on the list, and I found that they deal with this issue, and our building department doesn't deal with it. How do I know that? We had water in the basement for 10 days, we fought it for 10 days. We contacted the building department. We can't do anything about it. I said, you let them put gutters on, you can give them instructions on how to put gutters on. No, we can't do anything about it. I said, well, that's wrong. Something's wrong here. So, like I said, I went home and I researched it. It took me about five minutes to find what Chicago says. Chicago's got a website that tells you exactly how to put your gutters on your house, so you can get the water away from your neighbor's house. But I also found something else by accident, and you'll find that on the last page. It's Indiana Code Title Number 36-9-28.75. And it deals with water nuisance, stormwater nuisance. And it says, water that rises out of related stormwater that is transferred through runoff of artificial conveyance. That would be gutters and downspouts. Is directed to the property of another person, discharges stormwater or near the property line of another person, accelerates or increases the flow of stormwater onto another person's property, to which one or both of the following apply. The condition is injurious to health or conditions substantially obstructs the free use of property. It's saying that Indiana says it's illegal for them to do what they're doing, but our building department is not enforcing that, either out of ignorance or out of just lack of concern. Well, after dealing with water for 10 days, I can tell you I'm concerned. And we dealt with it already this year again, because he has not remedied the situation. I've talked to the neighbor, he owns it, he's a landlord owner, he doesn't care. I've talked to his agents, board members of my church who are related to some of his agents, have talked to them. We can't get anybody to help us with this landlord who won't help us get the water off our property that he keeps putting there. And, uh, I'd like a solution. I don't know how to get a solution here in this city, but I think the council... I don't know how to get a solution here in this city, but I think the council is the first place I could go, because you live here. Our foundations are approximately 100 years old in every house that's in this town. Some are older than that. Water is called a universal solvent by construction people. It will destroy everything in its path. I grew up in the Kenkey, uh, Kenkey Basin, I had a farm in the Iroquois Basin. I know a lot about water flooding. In fact, my parents have two feet of water in their, in their barn right now.
30 seconds, sir.
Water is destructive. We need the council, somebody, to give instruction to our building department to resolve this problem for me. All right? Thank you very much. Oh, by the, one more thing. If it's a law in Indiana, then that opens the council and the city up to litigation as co-defendants with the building department and the owner of that property, if there's no action taken. And we haven't talked to our lawyer yet, but that may be the next step, if I don't get some help. Okay? Thank you very much.
Veronica Fedenek?
Good evening. I have a hearing problem, so please forgive me. I'm here with great sadness, because seems like they have a council, when I say, I know we pay the taxes, and I know they raised the taxes last year, about $100, but I don't know why the council no respond. She have a phone number, but leave the message, she never respond. I'm just thinking, maybe you should change the policy, and say, you know, when they're doing the job, they're getting paid. If they're not doing the job, they ignoring people, you know, they should not be paid. Yes, I'm, I'm feel here, for the years I had to live here, that the criminal have more rights than we have. We just supposed to like pay taxes, shut up, and do nothing. So, I would just appreciate it, you take people who paying higher taxes, is struggle, it type of disincentive to call his consideration, because when I'm saying, we're not like garbage. That's why when I'm saying, when they have a phone number, this, it's something, I'm thinking, have to something be done. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any more requests, card? The chair now accept the motion to adjourn. Roll call to adjourn.
Maldonado?
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.